Did you give me thumbs up? Okay. It is 7:00 PM. This is the TAK Regular City Council meeting for Monday, July 15th. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, a little housekeeping before we get started. I'd like to make some agenda changes before we get started. First, I'd like to make a motion to add an executive session to the agenda to discuss personal matters and to obtain legal advice regarding signage and to return to the executive session afterwards to hold a vote if council so chooses. And I'd like to drop Item 1B, the proclamation thanking the sponsors for the Memorial Day 5K run, they're not here today, and to drop Item 7B, the introduction of the first reading to the ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 2 and 3. We just haven't had enough time to look that over. We'd like to push that back about a month. If everybody's in favor of that, please signify. Well, first I need a second.
Mr. Mayor, I think you misspoke. You said "return to executive session to vote."
Yes.
I think you meant "public session."
Return to public session to vote if council so chooses. Do I have a second on those items?
Second.
If everybody's in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. We've so noted on that. Okay.
Opposed.
You oppose.
I did.
Okay, so it's four to one. Okay. So let's start with presentation. Proclamation recognizing Jacob Petit on achieving the Eagle Scout. Is he here today? Okay, good. So we can start with that. And what was your Eagle Scout project?
My Eagle Scout project was ADA wheelchair and adaptive swing that I planned and built in Trailhead Park.
I remember that.
It is for disabled or like it's for disabled and handicapped children who do not have the ability to enjoy like a regular swing set. So I went around getting donations and fundraising during for about half a year to order and build this swing.
Good, are you with Troop 250?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's read this proclamation. Proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout Jacob Petit. Am I saying your last name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Whereas Jacob Petit has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America and whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout his life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown and whereas citizens of the city of TAK appreciate his hard work and raise and to raise funds and install an ADA accessible swing for Trailhead Park. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of TAK duly assembled do hereby congratulate and recognize Jacob Petit for his achievement in becoming an Eagle Scout. It is our honor to give him as a member of our community. Parents, I want my parents to come on up here too. Get a picture with him. And we also have another thing very special for you here. We have a congratulatory letter from Congressman Ralph Norman. And we also have this certificate from him also. Put that right there in front of me. Another picture. Come on up here, Mom. You get up here with him. Here, take this letter. Here, you want me to keep that? Do I have another thing from up here? This is the readingest job I've ever had. Okay, next, marketing update from Vonja Burris. Did I say your name right?
Yes, you did.
All right.
Good evening. As you mentioned, I'm Sandra Burris.
Oh, Sandra, I'm sorry, Sandra.
That's okay. Sandra Burris, Senior VP of Marketing and Communications with Visit York County. We, on behalf of the staff with Visit York County, we'd like to thank you for a great year. TK supported Visit York County with $8,000 in hospitality tax funding this year for our organization to provide events and marketing services to the city. We hope that you will consider that funding again next year. So I'll go a little bit of the year in review with you for the fiscal year 2018 and 2019 and some new initiatives that we laid or rolled out this that in that fiscal year. For instance, we have the Yoko Brew Trail and it was an initiative that honored or recognized the emerging breweries in the area. So we were able to roll that out through our mobile app. And then the Destination Marketing Fee Program. This program was actually put in place to offset the costs that we essentially lost from the York County H-Tax funding. Many of you may know that we we lost $900,000 from the York County H-Tax. So this program is put into place and it's a program where the hotels can actually charge up to 3%. Our hotels are going to be charging 2% on room rates to its customers. At any time that the customer decided they just do not want to pay that fee, they can go to the front desk and that can will be removed for them. And we have about eight to 10 hotels enrolled in the program currently. Next, we have the Battle at the Rock Basketball Showcase. It's our very first basketball showcase that we hosted in 2018 and it was very successful. And then we introduced the Mobile Visitor Center, which is, you know, we have a brick and mortar, but you know, sometimes you have to go to the visitor. So now we have a mobile visitor center that we call Visi. And Visi goes out, it's a cargo van, and Visi goes out to any program or event that's bringing out the masses. We want to make sure that Visi is there and we're distributing information to the visitors as well as locals at those those programs. And then we were also able to hire a digital communications manager this year who is in charge of all of our social media content, web development content, and it's been a pleasure to have her be with us this year. And we also introduced the MLK Basketball Showcase in January of this year, which was another basketball basketball program, which comprised was mostly comprised of local schools in the area. And finally, we hosted our first annual meeting where we were able to give everyone an update on the things that we the new initiatives and things that we rolled out and how successful tourism, travel and tourism was for York County in that fiscal year. Continuing on with new initiatives, we were also able to get 100% funding from all of our municipalities this in that fiscal year. And we also was able to introduce some new sponsor funding via the Brew Trail as well as our annual meeting event. We also decided that regional marketing was very was something that we wanted to do more of, so we were able to do some things with Charlotte Magazine as well as South Carolina Living Magazine. We also introduced Road Trips York Count Road Trip York County, which is now a YouTube series where we where our digital communications manager, she gets out there and basically it's a video series where you she truly takes you through the road, down the journey, off the beaten path to different areas in York County to show you what what all the great amenities we have here in York County. So if you haven't subscribed, be sure to subscribe to Road Trip York County. We also introduced a new website in May of that last fiscal year. This website is now more interactive and very easy to navigate. There's also a shopping cart on site where if you're if you're navigating the website and there's different things that you want to places you want to go and see and things you want to do, you can actually click on those attractions and it'll and at the very end, you can print out a guide for yourself. And then the Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator was also something that we were able to purchase. And this is more so in line with the direct, we were able to calculate the direct spending for many of our sports events with that economic calculator. Measuring success. With the introduction of the Yoko Brew Trail in September, it really took off. It gave our app the momentum that it needed and just ignited some new energy with our visitors. And in February of this year, Governor McMaster awarded us the Bundy Award at the South Carolina Governors Conference for Outstanding Attraction. We also, so that's a state award, and we also received a national award for the Battle at the Rock Basketball Showcase this year. The NASC gave us the locally created event of the year award. So that was a national award that we were proud of. Also, and we also hosted a group of journalists and writers earlier earlier this year in February, and it was about 12 journalists and writers in that group. And this is an opportunity where we invite journalists and and writers. We partner with South Carolina PRT and the Old English District, and we hosted these writers throughout York County. So we were able to showcase showcase what you York County was all about by taking them to different attractions and areas in York County. And there was a USA Today journalist in that in the mix during that time period and we were she sat next, she sat beside me at dinner. So we were able to talk about York and it had not been for that, she we probably wouldn't be up here, but we received the USA Today Top 10 10 Best Readers' Choice Travel Award for Best Small Town Cultural Scene. And we did that by once they, you know, initiated the judging or the contest, we were able to use social media to push that through and as well what the city was able to jump on that as well. We had over 100 stories published this year compared to 41 stories published last year and had 4,143,086 impressions across all social channels, 181% increase from the previous fiscal year. So tourism is big business in York County and the partners and the Panthers coming to Rock Hill will change towards the tourism landscape of this region. So we're excited about that. And in 2017, 245 million in visitor spending was collected. Also in that year, 5.79 million in local tax revenue was collected. And that resulted in tourism in York County saved every household $245 per year in taxes paid. So we'll talk, show you a little graph here that shows you the difference in the two fiscal years. As you can see, we have the majority of this funding coming from York County, which is at 82% last fiscal year. And then 7% looked like that was from Rock Hill. And then Fort Mill was the 3%. And there was another 3% from grants. And then others would have been the 1%. And then in the 2019-2020 fiscal year, it'll be a little bit of a change. We'll have 62% in York County funding, 7% with Rock Hill funding, and 4% for Fort Mill and looks like that's 3% with grants. And then 20% with our Destination Marketing Fee Program. So that's the new initiative that we launched this year. So we're expecting that to do really successful for us. And then the 2% with other. So events in Tika K for the 2018-2019 year was in 2019, we hosted the U.S. Pro Mini Golf Association U.S. Open here at Mr. Putty's Fun Park. That resulted in 64 professional mini golfers across that came in from across the country, 99,613 total estimated economic impact, approximately 100 in total attendance. And the awards ceremony was held here at the Glennon Center. We also participated in the Croquet Croquet Network State Shield Southeast Quad Tournament, June 7th through the 9th here at the TK Croquet Course at TK Golf Club. There was 14 nationally ranked croquet players across the southeast, resulting in 12,481 total estimated economic impact. And that was approximately 50 total attendees. Services currently offered to Tika K, as we mentioned, Visi, our mobile visitor center is we want to get Visi out as much as we can to different events. So whenever we can get Visi to Tika K, we'll get Visi to Tika K as well. We would, we'd love to do more with getting events here at the Glennon Center, including and it's also included in our meetings and facilities guide. Visibility in 15 brochures distributed to 40,000 visitors annually is where we listed Tika K. We also have a Tika K tear-off map distributed at our visitor center and area hotels. Promotion of events, attractions, and restaurants on social media, Visit York County app, as well as visityorkcounty.com. And this here is our, the July issue of the YC Magazine is where we actually wrote an article about golfing in York County. And we did talk about in that in that article, we listed the TK Golf Club and promoted visiting the TK Golf Club through the Mountains to Midlands Golf Alliance and the Old English District Guide. With marketing communications, we had two staff members and a third, including our president, to serve on the local organizing committee for the Taste of York County at the Glennon Center. And Visit York County also assisted with the marketing efforts of that event as well. Visit York County has produced marketing that has recognized Tika K in various blogs, newsletters, our social media platforms, our app. We would do push notifications on such events as the TK Concert Series, the Mr. Putty's Fun Park USA Open, everything that you could. We had a blog written about everything that you could that you should know about fireworks and the Fourth of July happenings in York County. We also had a blog on 10 things that Dad actually wants to do for Father's Day that included Tika K as well. And also beat the heat in York County with things to stay cool. Places to take your your dog in York County featured your dog park. And summer, again, the Summer Concert Bucket List, you guys are included in that. And also the 10 Things to Do Memorial Day Weekend and Every May Event You Can't Miss in York County. So those were some of the things. And we continued on with our Yoko Buzz newsletter. We have a subscription of 1,300 of subscribers and we promoted all York, all Tika K events through our events calendar and through the Yoko Buzz, which is our newsletter that you see there. Requests for H-Tax funding, Visit York County will continue to invest that funding back into Tika K to bring more events to the area, more leisure travel, increase marketing, increase exposure, promote your events and attractions and restaurants. And we will do our best to get more events to the Glennon Center. Mobile Visitor Center will be available again for any event that you would like her to be at. And social media choreography and increase marketing and promotes special events through Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and our app. So tourism creates dollars. And there is a circle of life when tourism supports economic development that turns back to supporting additional tourism. The more tourists we bring to Tika K, the more hospitality fund hospitality tax funding you can generate that will assist you in meeting your goals and objectives for the city of Tika K. Thank you.
Any questions? No questions. All right, let's move to Item 2A, Tika K Forever Foundation. Who does?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, based on your nominations, the on your committee appointments, Sharon DeOnofrio, I believe is how her last name is, received five nominations for the one open position. Nick Amico and Matt DeWitt both received the top nominations for the Planet Commission. Matt DeWitt's was five nominations and Nick Amico was four nominations for the two open Planet Commission or two open Planet Commission seats that are available there for your consideration this evening.
All right, very good.
Congrats.
Are they here? You need to make them.
Congrats.
Very good.
We got to make a motion to approve them.
I got any questions for for me here?
I don't think so. We just have to make a motion to approve you, I think.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve. I don't have the first, what's their names again?
Sharon.
You can say it stated by the city manager. It's Sharon DeOnofrio, Nick Amico, and Matt DeWitt. As as mentioned, we'll capture it in a minute.
Second.
Second.
I'm good.
All approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. All approved, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everybody. Look forward to working with you. Okay, item number three is public comments. First on the list is Frank Ambrose. Stand, come forward for your three minutes in the spotlight. Please state your name and address.
Put my glasses on now. My name is Frank Ambrose. I live at 8042 Windjammer Drive. Appreciate your time for hearing me, taking my role as a government teacher, I guess, to heart, speaking my mind to an elected group. Here to talk about the changes that have been sent to the residents on Windjammer about the parking there with the four guest passes for a home that I have purchased to have guests park at my house. I now have to have a permit. And if I want extras, I have to contact the city and go through those channels as well. It was brought to my attention that there were 43 houses or addresses that were asked to sign a petition. Of the 43, I believe there was one no. There were three others. One was signaled not at home. My address and a neighbor of mine were not even contacted. I spoke to the people who were doing the survey, walking down my street, and they went right by me and put me down on that form as not having any contact. That is wrong. That is not how democracy operates. They know where I live. If it meant that much, then they should contact all 43 members that live on that street that are affected by this. If we're here to work out the differences or what is a best solution, then get those impacted at the table to make suggestions. Putting a no parking from seven to five on a side of the street with residents having to get guest passes is not the best solution. There are so many other things out there. Why this one park? Why this one park is signaled out of the 16 parks that we have in Tika K that make it, you know, a great place to live? I've lived on Point Clear. I've lived next to Ryan. Parking's the same down on that street. There's no way, you have to park on one side if you want to have guests. Are they going to have to get guest resident or guest permits there? No. Why is this one area signaled singled out? Make it a blanket across Tika K, that's fine, but why this one area? I think that's wrong. There are other, more accommodating things that we can do. Put a parking kiosk. Put a no parking on one side of the street. If public safety is a concern, so safety vehicles can get down, then put park no parking on one side of the street. Put a, make passes more readily available. Put a parking attendant, whatever, but this is not the answer to just blanket knee-jerk reaction to a few citizens who do not want people using our public spaces. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Dan Dunn. Come up for your three minutes. Please state your name and your address, please, Dan.
All right, I am Daniel Dunn at 1071 Hunter's Run Drive. Council members, police, friends in the gallery, thank you for letting me have a moment to come up here and speak. Many family members, friends, and colleagues are not going to like what I have to say this evening, but I feel I cannot stay silent on this matter. It has come to my attention that there is a monument on the grounds of the new police station with biblical scripture and other religious references. I personally have no problem with religion as I am a practicing churchgoer myself. I also have no problem with people expressing their beliefs at their home or business. What I do have a problem with is religious references on government property, especially law enforcement. Public grounds and public services should remain secular and neutral for all members of the community, all members, so they should feel welcome here. A monument in question does not do that. That makes Tika K look exclusionary and biased towards one specific group at the expense of others. That is not my Tika K. Is that yours? I applaud the kindness and generosity of the women's club who donated this item, most likely intending no will. I also applaud and fully support our police force and root for their safety and ability to go home at the end of their shift unharmed. That said, there are proper places for certain things. The Tika K Police Station is not the place for a religious memento. I would highly recommend a modification, a relocation, or removal of the boulder before Tika K ends up in a legal quagmire, which very well could happen if nothing is done here. In addition, I would implore all our public officials to be more mindful of the fact that not all Tika K residents think alike or worship alike. They should keep all their citizens in mind, all citizens, when they make decisions on matters like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Very well said. Next is Bill, is it Anan? Come on up, Bill. Please state your name and address.
Bill Anan, 8010 Windjammer, Colonel, Council. Thanks for having me. I'm also here to talk about the Windjammer parking debacle situation, whatever that is. You know, I live at the corner of Windjammer and Kiwi. Every weekend, I see young couples, I see minorities, I see lots of people parking on the street, wandering down to the beach to have a good time, which is our motto, the good life, right? So by putting up no parking signs and then blocking these people all the way up to Silver Fox is going to make them walk twice as far, okay? Which makes no sense because the same people complaining about this are the same people that also put the kibosh on the sidewalk two years ago and now our fat's money went somewhere else. So just the simple fact that if we each have four parking passes and there's 40 houses, that means we can have 160 different people parking on Windjammer, which literally makes the problem as bad or worse because the only time we ever have a problem is on Memorial Day and Labor Day. It's pretty much the, the, this is an overreaction. I think it's ridiculous. I think it's exclusionary to the other guy's point. I don't think that's the neighborhood we live in. I don't think I'm looking at a bunch of racists up here that don't like minorities or poor people or anything else. And I just think this is a complete overreaction. I don't think it's fair to all involved. I don't think it spreads goodwill or or friendship, and it's certainly not fair. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Bill. Those are very good comments. All right, Item 4 is approval of minutes for both the regular council and the special council. Council, you've seen the minutes. Any additions, deletions, subtractions, any changes? Okay, hearing none, they stand as published. Item number five, committee reports, Heather on Tika K Forever Foundation and Economic Development.
Okay, well, I'll be short and sweet. Tika K Forever did not meet this month, so check that one off. Economic Development Commission, couple just quick announcements. Ashley Sullivan was appointed as secretary. They met on June 24th. They are currently meeting actually right now and they are doing an informal meeting, probably somewhere in this building actually, to determine a few things. They were each tasked to determine one to two develop- They were each tasked to determine one to two developers for the group to review and discuss, to bring in economic development from the outside, determine one to two cities open to the outside of the Carolinas that share similarities with Tika K for the group and to review and discuss, and then finally to make suggestions for Economic Development Committee Pitch Book and for marketing material. So, they were tasked with some to-do items, which they are informally meeting about right now, to then take into their August meeting so that they are ready to move the ball down the road. So, very quick, short synopsis, that's what I got.
All right, very good, thank you. Item five C is Planning Commission, Alicia.
Thank you so much, Mayor and members of council. The Planning Commission met on July first, and for the newbies in the crowd, we meet the first Monday of every month in this room at six-thirty, so, put it on your calendars for the next four years, four-year term. We had conversations about the annexation and rezoning of a portion of property adjacent to Wind, Windhaven, in the Windhaven Development, and this will allow additional connectivity within that subdivision. This will be coming to council in August, so just a heads up on that. We also elected our vice chairman to fill Larry Franklin's temporary, or to fill his term, and we, or they elected Jason Pitcock. We had conversations about the comprehensive plan update progress, and there is a crowdsourcing app that Susan is working hard on, and the rollout on that was planned for July fifteenth, if that still happened.
It'll be later this week.
Later this week, so be looking for a crowdsourcing app, which will allow people to comment on different areas throughout the city that have capital projects and, and plans. And that pretty much wraps it up.
Okay, let's move on to item six, unfinished business. This is the second reading of an ordinance to provide for Duke Energy Franchise Agreement. The executive, the executive summary is Duke Energy, York Electric, Comporium, and Spectrum are all required to pay a franchise fee on grocery receipts collected within the municipal boundaries. The Duke Energy Agreement is set to expire this month. The ordinance renews this agreement for another five years and provides two additional five year renewals. They will continue to pay to the city five percent of their grocery receipts collected from within the city, and since Alicia works for Duke, she is recusing herself from this vote.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? No questions. Any questions from the audience? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to provide for the Duke Energy Franchise Agreement.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Gus Machunas. Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven A is some new business, resolution reappointing chief municipal judge and a setting a term of office. This resolution reappoints Mr. Justin Bice as the city's chief municipal judge and sets a term of office of four years, beginning October first, two thousand nineteen, in order to align with the city's fiscal year. The resolution also provides that Judge Bice will continue serving in this role in an interval between his current term and the beginning of a new term. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution reappointing chief municipal judge and setting terms of office.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alicia. Dash, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, it's time to vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Six, seven B, we move to a future date, let's move to, seven C, moving right along. Seven C, discussion regarding recycling and adoption of enforcement rules. Lacey Armstrong, our communications manager, has done an outstanding job in communicating to our residents what is and what isn't recyclable. Unfortunately, we have had several sections of the city who just aren't following the rules and potentially putting the city as a whole in jeopardy of losing the ability to send our recyclables to York County due to high contamination rates. The purpose of this agenda item is to give council the opportunity to discuss open various ideas of how potentially, of how to potentially enforce compliance. So, any discussion on this item? And some thoughts? I bet you do.
I bet I do. So I think that everybody has done a really great job, as mentioned by the mayor. The city has done an excellent job. I think the residents have done an excellent job, for the most part. There's always a few in a bunch that, you know, choose not to follow the rules, and I would hate to lose what we've worked so hard to get back because of that. My suggestion would be through volunteers from the community to do some kind of spot check, to literally just open up the can, check it out, and not to dig through, I'm not talking about trash diving here, but to literally just do, wow, you have like four, five plastic bags, or all of your bag, things are bagged, or, I don't know, whatever it is, we put a little sticker on it, they skip that particular pickup for that week, signature then sees that, they don't pick up the can for that particular week, maybe we give them a couple times that they can do that, and then finally we'll pull their cart at some point, whatever guidelines we want to set in, in motion. That is kind of my overall suggestion, but I, that's just throwing.
Well, and the reality of this conversation is that we're about to lose the ability to recycle in the city.
Again.
No matter how hard these guys have worked, and, you know, had an integral part of partnering with the county to be able to have the ability to recycle, and it's, it's about to go away because of our citizens here in Tika K contaminating what's going on to the recycle bin. So, I don't know the solution, that's, that's one suggestion. When I saw it on the, on the agenda last week, it's, hmm, what do you do?
Well, I don't, I don't think we have a choice but to do something. I mean, ninety-nine percent of the city is doing what they're supposed to do, and the one percent that either doesn't care, or, I, I don't want to put words in somebody's mouth, that one percent is going to jeopardize a city that's been known for recycling to, to lose the ability to do so. I mean, I, I remember way back when, when we first started, you know, it was one day a month, and it quickly became obvious that we recycled so much that we couldn't do just one day a month. So they switched it to every other, and I mean, I'm proud of that, you know, that we, as a city, I mean, we're supposed to care about the lake, the environment, and everything else here, so I'm real proud of that fact, and now we've got a few people that are jeopardizing the whole thing. So we have to enforce it somehow. I mean, I like your idea. I know we've kind of raised that before. I, I don't know who's going to volunteer to do it, and I hope, but we have to do something. We can't just continue to say, to put messages out on Facebook and on our website that, you know, hey, this is good and this is bad, you can't do it. People are still putting their, their lawn debris in their recycle bin. I can understand, maybe somebody putting the wrong kind of can in there or a piece of plastic in it, but I think we all know that you can't put leaves and, and grass clippings in there. All right, they're doing it on purpose. They just don't care. So, we can't allow them to do it and mess it up for the rest of us.
Eagle Scout project for someone? Anybody out there listening?
Do, do we really think that the contamination that we've seen is people just blatantly don't care about recycling and the environment, or do we have any sort of information that would state, like, the homes or the loads are in areas where, you know, maybe they're elderly, or people that don't, wouldn't have internet access, or things like that, that aren't able to be educated?
Well, based on what we've gotten from the county, when we've had the rejected loads, and then tracing that, that specific truck from Signature Waste as to where it went, it's primarily been in the Lakewood, Serenypoint, Gardendale, Cameron Creek area, and the Windjammer area. So, that's, that's where the contaminated loads have come from. So, you've kind of got, you know, a little bit of the, you know, tight lots, traditional Tika K area with, with the Windjammer beyond, because it doesn't just pick up Windjammer, but basically from Windjammer going towards the firehouse, you know, Timberlake and those roads. So you've got some of that, but then you've also got the new sections as well, and that's where they have, the, the largest rejected loads have come from. So, as far as pinpointing it, you know, was it, yeah, in a predominantly senior area or things like that? It, it really isn't. It's, yeah, I've, I've seen some of the social media posts that, oh, well, you know, Signature Waste is picking up trash cans and dumping it with the recycles, and that's not the case either. I mean, they've got cameras on the trucks, they're dumping recycle carts. Yeah, there's bags and bags of recycled material in the, in the cart, you know, but the bagged items is what's making it a, a rejected load, and stuffed into those bags are, as Mr. Machunas said, you know, lawn debris, you know, leaves and dirt and things like that. So, I don't think it's a, a matter of Signature Waste contaminating thirty-five percent of a truckload with, by picking up trash cans. I'm, I'm not sure what the answer is, but we're, we're more than willing and able to, to try to participate and help in this.
What percentage of the toders do you guys think have, have the new labels on them?
Like the orange lids or the new labels?
No, the actual new labels that were updated. I know mine stays way down the hill, so it's not, but have we kind of looked at that to see, or ask, hey, what, how many toders do you have? How many new labels are on them?
When we passed out the flyers individually from neighborhood to neighborhood, and I did all of Trail Ridge myself, we also put a new sticker with each of those. And so I would say the majority, the vast, there, there may be a house or two here or there that got skipped. I can't speak to everyone, but I would say that the vast majority of every house was hit, and those two things, what you can and cannot recycle was put in there, and the sticker for your cart was put in there.
So we purchased five thousand, well, Signature Waste purchased for us, five thousand of the new recycle stickers. We have two hundred of them left. So, and you've got about forty-two hundred, you know, addresses in Tika K, so I, I would have to agree with my server man, I think the overwhelming majority got the stickers.
Well, they didn't put them on, I can't speak to that, but they got them.
So I love the idea of utilizing volunteers, especially because I know that there's so many advocates for recycling in our area, and, you know, with a group of volunteers, you can do a lot more than you could with maybe like one or two code enforcement people or city staff or whatnot. I'm wondering if though, before we could, we, we start doing any sort of enforcement or, like, not picking up, if we utilize the volunteers to do door knocking or something like that, to actually educate individually? Because sometimes it just takes that conversation to, to get to some folks, and I know that that sounds hard, too, but I, I don't know about volunteers enforcing or determining whether or not someone gets their, their load picked up. I, I don't know.
I think that would be really hard, to knock on forty-two hundred doors, as somebody who's knocked on a lot of doors.
I don't, I don't think it would be easy either. I'm just trying to think of, you know, other, other ways we could help educate people, because, you know, there, it could even be like, you know, or, you know, hopefully it's not, but it could even be city facilities that, you know, we, we've got employees that don't live here, so maybe they're not getting the message, or you have guests that are staying at your house, and maybe they don't know, I mean, how do you get to, how do you get to everyone? And I know that door knocking wouldn't necessarily fix all of that, but...
Is there any public comments? Anybody in the audience have any ideas of anything that could possibly help? Because it's going to go away if we continue.
Come up to me, come on.
You're not going to keep the recycling? Don't take the trash with it. Want people to start recycling?
Gotta come up, we gotta come up, so you can be on record.
Stop recycling, start recycling, and take their trash. Can you not hear me?
No.
If you want people to start recycling, if you're not going to take their recycling, don't take their trash. One week with no trash taken, and they'll start recycling.
I like the way you think.
Scored, sir. It's a tough bird.
Now you see why our kids are so well behaved.
Hello, Kelly McAluso, two-five-zero-three-four, Timberlake. I called the city a couple times, because we've noticed that the fire department has black, plastic bags in their recycle bin.
Mm-hmm.
Aha, found the culprit. Okay.
So, it occurred today again, and they, and they did take their cans, so, you know, it's frustrating for us, because now we see we've worked very hard on our block, in our household, to make sure we recycle, and now that truck is probably going in the dump, so, addressing that would be great, and I think tagging and finding not taking their recycles, I mean, if that's the only thing that's gonna keep the rest of us being able to recycle, then do what you gotta do. If you need volunteers, we got volunteers.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
That's great until it gets cold.
That would be my recommendation, unless anybody has any other grand plans, is to see if Lacey can maybe put it in the rewind or something like that, garner up some volunteers, we can train them as to exactly what needs to be in there, and then do some kind of sticker on the cart, hey, we noticed that you have X, Y, Z materials in there, whether you choose to pick up a cart or not.
Preparation for the Signature Waste has given, if this was the route we were, council decided to go, Signature Waste has given us the, the oops stickers, whatever, so they, they have agreed to supply those to us. As far as putting out the informational rewind, soliciting the volunteers, we, we really gonna need somebody to help champion that from a, from a, staff is slammed, I mean, to be, to be quite honest, so, I mean, we're more than willing to help push out, communicate, things like that, but, I mean, I've got, I've got staff members that are drinking from fire hoses right now with, with so much going on. Sorry, I saw you put your hand in the air, so I'm more than happy to co, to help coordinate what that was, that'd be great.
And I think communicating how dire the situation really is. It's a month away from going away.
Correct.
So.
Okay, we can do that. All right, I'd make city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll try to be brief. Recreation improvement plan, project update, the Turner restroom facility is completed, Trailhead basketball court upgrades are underway, the fencing has been repaired and stained. The setups in the parking lot are underway, should be finished by the end of the week, and the restriping of the court should take place before the end of the month, if not sooner. Work has begun at Rundy Park, three of the four sides have been repaired and repainted, and work is underway on the restrooms. Once that's completed, the deck will be expanded to, to wrap that project up. Bocce ball courts should get started soon with a goal of completing them by months in, and the lighting at the pickleball and tennis courts started today, should be finished by the end of day tomorrow, and I still don't have any word yet from SEDNR on the grant for Windjammer. Have not heard from them, so I'm, I'm assuming they're still waiting on the York County delegation, so that's where that, that part of the, of the plan is. The next concert is August seventeenth with Ultimate Al Dean as our headliner, it's a Jason Al Dean tribute band. Should be a great show, and we look forward to seeing everyone out at that one, July fourth. Wanted to spend a quick second on that. It was an amazing day, even with the brief rainstorm in the afternoon. Big thank you to Joey Blethyn and Lacey Armstrong for their efforts in organizing the day and sharing all the fun through our social media. Thank you to Emily Jackley, who actually is here tonight, and the volunteers that she helped organize to help us out as well. Also like to thank Chief Parker and Chief Hasty and their departments for all their efforts with public safety that day and keeping everybody safe. It takes a lot of planning and organizing to pull off so many wonderful events in one day, and I really couldn't be prouder of staff and their efforts. They just do a tremendous job, and I, I think everybody has a good understanding of why Joey's favorite day of the year is July fifth, the day after all of that. We have received five bids on our Sea Fund roadwork for this year. Tim Gillette is working with our engineer to certify the bids, and we'll bring that to, to council at your August meeting for our hopeful bid award, and then hopefully get those projects started soon thereafter. As a reminder, July twenty-seventh, we're having our official ribbon cutting and grand opening for our new police station. Will begin at eleven AM sharp, and after the ribbon cutting, members of our police department will be taking anyone that wants to go on a guided tour, they'll be able to do so, and they'll guide them from, from spot to spot, and explain everything. There's also going to be barbecue and hot dogs, it's free, it'll be out in the parking lot, and they're going to have some little activities and things for the kids, so it's definitely a family-friendly event. Members of the general public, there will not be parking at the police station for you, you can park at City Hall, park at Trailhead, ride a bike, you know, what have you, but for city council and our dignitaries that will be attending, we will have parking for you at the, at the station. Half of the parking lot's gonna be taken up by the food and the... Half of the parking lot's gonna be taken up by the food and the festivities and things, so that's why it's gonna be a little bit limited there, but we hope everybody can attend and come see the new facility. And last but not least, candidate filing for the November election will open on August the seventh, and will close on September the sixth. Costs twenty-five bucks, put your name in the hat. So August, again, that's August seventh, and will close on September sixth. The last day to register to vote in person is August fourth, last day to register online at scvotes.org is October sixth, and the last day to register by mail is October seventh. It's gotta be postmarked by that date, and election day is November fifth, so we'll be getting all that information here in the coming week up on the website for all to know. Filing is over at the Voters Commission Office over in York, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Can I put up my signs yet?
Thirty days, Gus, thirty days.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Item nine is council comments. We'll start with Ryan Richard.
Um, I just have the one regarding the amendment to the agenda, grouping four items together for us all to vote on once, to me makes absolutely no sense. The one, we were here for a special council meeting a week ago discussing procurement and contracting, and gave staff specific direction to get that done, it's important, and now today because of whatever reason, personal schedules or didn't have time to read it or whatever that is, we decided to group it in with an all yes vote. I just don't think it's the right thing to do, so I wanted to let everybody know that. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Alicia.
I just wanted to thank staff for a great Fourth of July, you guys did a great job, and so thank you for making TK look great, and it was fun. We had a lot of fun with the family. And then I just want to thank Officer Josh for giving me the tour of the police station. It looks great, I'm excited about the grand opening coming up, and looking forward to that day when we've got a great police station.
Thank you, Gus.
I also want to thank staff for all the hard work for July fourth. That's a really special day here in Tika K, and I love it every year, and I know how much work it was. Congratulations, and thank you to Sharon, Nick, and Matthew for volunteering to help our community, and congratulations to you. I don't know how many people watch this, but if you're not getting it yet about recycling, I don't know what it's gonna take, but, you know, whoever's not, don't take that away from the rest of us, okay? I know it's none of you out there, but maybe somebody's watching, so that's all I got to say.
I heard it was Windjammer.
I'm just gonna echo what everybody else said. Thank you for a great Fourth of July, thank you to all the staff. I'm excited about the recreational improvements that we're making throughout the city, so make sure you stop by at one of the many facilities that are being upgraded. Gus, David, and I will be going to our MAS C conference later this week. You guys are going, right? Okay. In Greenville, so we leave, I guess that's Thursday this weekend.
I don't want to go, but I have to go.
Oh, well, I want to go, because we get to learn new exciting things about how to do city business. So that's what I got.
Yep, and I just want to echo about Fourth of July. If you guys go on vacation on Fourth of July, you're missing the best time. This city does the Fourth of July better than any place I've ever been. It's fifteen hours, I'm wore out by the end of the day. I sleep like a baby, it's only day of the year, I sleep like a baby. It's great. And Charlie, do we have any... Susan, do we have any updates on the crosswalks? Oh, you gonna come up here? That's fine.
Not retired anymore. Get your butt up there.
Welcome back, welcome back.
The first step is our pedestrian study, and the RFAT's consultant asked us when would be the appropriate time to do that study, and we chose to postpone that study until school reconvenes in August, because we think that that will be a higher pedestrian count, and that's what is more important to do. So it's only about a month delay, so.
Do we have to pay for it?
No.
Okay. Because I thought, how silly if we have to pay for it.
Our match comes out of our annual allocation to RFATs.
Okay, so August or September, we have to do the study?
The study will be when school starts back into session in August.
Okay, great. Okay, so if anybody wondered what we're talking about, the lighted, three-light...
Yeah, they're called rapid flashing beacons.
Rapid flashing, yeah. Is a lighted crosswalk we've asked for, for, is it Heron Harbor? What's the name of the first street?
We've applied for actually six crosswalks, but I...
What's the first one we wanted, right here, Heron Harbor? And it wouldn't do any good to... Of course, anytime you ask for federal funds, they gotta do a study, and they're about ten thousand dollars each, we got them down to about seven thousand, I think it was, and then they said, oh, you gotta do a study. Well, if the study was fifteen thousand, it didn't do any good to get us... to do a fifteen thousand dollar study on a seven thousand dollar crosswalk. So then we got kind of, well, then forget it, and then they said, oh, no, we'll do the study for you. Okay, then that's good again. So we kept going back and forth, but then it doesn't do any good to do a study in the summer because nobody's crossing the walk. So Susan was very good about, okay, let's do it when the kids are back in school. Great, so we... It was highs and lows, and highs and lows all the time, so now, good, we're doing it in August.
Our first step, since the rapid flashing beacons are not included in the manual of uniform traffic control, which is what SEDOT uses in federal highways, we had to get approval from Washington with federal highways.
Nothing's easy when you're dealing with a federal government.
Allow us to even pursue the study, so that took a little while.
Okay, great, thank you. So this has been going on now for seven months, six months? Phew, okay, okay, so motion to adjourn to executive... Motion to adjourn to executive session. I have a second. All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye, we're in executive session.